All right, we don't have an official clock, but I'll call it by my phone. The T-Mobile time, it's seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Uh, we are the Okoni Planning Commission. Uh, we are a recommending body to the Okoni County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made here tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to B O C for final action. Uh, tonight's agenda and signup sheets were out back. Anyone wishing to speak should sign up. Um, there'll be an opportunity later on also to raise your hand if you want to come up and speak. Uh, here's what we do. Um, the Okoni Planning Department staff will present their report and recommendations on each request. The public input will be received from the petitioner, the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. And any uh, people wanting to speak in favor of the requests. Um, those two categories will take about twenty minutes or so. Then we'll open it up for anybody in opposition. And again, we'll give them uh, just twenty minutes. Uh, after that, the petitioner, if they have time left, will uh, maybe address a few of the issues if we feel it necessary. Otherwise, I'll close the public input section and bring it up to these guys at the table. Uh, for their questions or comments. And then we'll uh, after we've satisfied any questions and comments they have, we'll look for a motion and a second. And uh, a vote will happen. Uh, as a courtesy, uh, for the benefit of those present and a few watching online. Uh, please come to the podium uh, to speak. Now, on approaching the podium, give us your name and your home address. Uh, direct your comments up here to the planning commission, please, and not to the audience. Thank you. And uh, where there might be multiple speakers, um, it is permissible to say ditto if you agree with that last speaker. And then go on to new points that you wanted to make sure are heard. Um, and then uh, that way we avoid hearing the same um, comments over and over. Uh, we ask the audience to extend the courtesy by not applauding or commenting from their seats. Uh, and any um, or any of the speakers. All right, with that, I'll ask. Uh, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the March meeting? And uh, are there any corrections that? I guess there was a second version that already came out, caught a few, any other mistakes that we need to correct? All right, if not, I will ask for hands or a motion to approve the minutes. All right, Chris. Can I, can I get a second?
Sure, check it.
All right, Jim. And then all in favor of approving the minutes from the March meeting, please read the writing. With that going on to the first item, I'll ask. Hearing to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, your first item this evening is rezoned P twenty-four zero zero five six. Richard Grayson, applicant and owner. This is located off of Moreland Way and uh, four forty-one as parcels B zero six zero three zero A. And W zero one dash zero two four. Uh, they're currently zoned A R and mobile home. In the community village character area. And the request is to rezone the three point three eight acre properties from M H and A R to R two, a two-family residential district. These are the recorded plots, uh, that were submitted with the application. This is the concept plan, a slightly larger version showing the access from Moreland Way through the currently zoned mobile home lot. Uh, to the uh, currently A R lot with the two duplexes. Uh, these are architectural renderings submitted with the application. Uh, again, uh, layout and rendering, layout, rendering. And based on Board of Commissioners policies, decision-making criteria and standards outlined in the development codes of Okona County. Staff recommends denial of the request to rezon the three point three eight acres to R two. However, if the board chooses to approve this request, staff recommends following conditions of approval. Uh, one and two are our standard conditions. Number three, all dwelling units shall have facades that consist primarily of brick, stone, stucco, or lap siding consisting of painted wood lap or fiber cement board siding. No vinyl or metal siding shall be allowed. Thank you.
All right, we gotta get, okay, Commissioner's representative.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer with Pittman Greery Engineering, ten fifty Barber Creek Drive, building four hundred. Um, I'm representing Mr. Rick, Mr. Rick Grayson in the rezone request before you this evening. Uh, to begin with, I would like to give you a little history of the properties. Uh, Mr. Grayson bought the larger two point nine one acre tract in two thousand sixteen. And at that time, the tract was on A R one and and had no access to Moreland Way. Um, it appears to be somewhat landlot, but in fact, it does have access to the four forty-one bypass, which is a limited access highway. Um, at the time of purchase, uh, Mr. Grace's plan was to hold on to the track, hoping that he might purchase one of the lots along Moreland Way. And gain access there due to the uncertainty in the magnitude of the required G dot improvements. Um, his goal at the time was to eventually divide the two point nine one acres into two parcels under the A R one class of zoning classification. Uh, since that class would allow for a one point one seven acre lot, uh, when there was no sewer available. Um, when the adjoining a smaller point four acre lot became available in two thousand seventeen. He purchased that and also with the goal of then gaining access to Moreland Way. Uh, by a twenty-five foot access easement and then constructing three residences. Um, as you know, in in late two thousand nineteen, the U D C was updated with significant modifications. Uh, that A R one class went to A R. And with the minimum lot sizes changing from one point one seven acres to two acres when sewer is not available. Um, and had Mr. Grayson been a client of ours at the time, I would advise him to take advantage of of an allowed administrative lot split prior to that change in the U D C. He could have done that. Um, earlier this year, um, after cleanup began on the trailer park that's out there. Um, nearby, Mr. Grayson came to us so we could review his options for the property. Um, as we reviewed the existing conditions and code parameters, my first inclination was to exhaust getting additional property to make a lot split feasible. You see, the old twenty-five foot access easement that we could have done under the old code. Um, is now required to be forty feet under those U D C modifications. This substantially impacts that mobile home lot. Um, also, if you were to try for an R one zoning class now, that two point nine one acre tract could not support a split since the minimum lot size is now an acre and a half. Just don't have enough acreage, so advised him to try to get some more land. Um. He tr- he went to Mr. Palace, um, and tried to get enough land to make three acres to do that split. Um, Mr. Palace's piece of property is located in the city of Watkinsville, is designated as park, recreation, and conservation. Um, in talking with Mr. Palace, he was unwilling to sell. Um, as we reviewed and discussed other options, none seemed truly viable to meet his original development goals. And during our discussions, I realized that I had never visited that part of our community. So I have a couple of photographs from my. Kind of want to go through these with you a little bit. So. Let's see, this is coming in on Moreland Drive. And this is um, on Moreland Heights Road. So if you come in Moreland Heights Drive, you turn on Moreland Heights Road, it dead ends to Moreland Way. Um, next pictures, if you're. If you're standing kind of at our property to the right, this is the adjoining property to the right of our property. And this is the property immediately to the left. And this is properties two to the left. Um, and then if you're turn around, if you're standing at the entrance of the property, directly across the street is this property to your right. And then the mobile home part to your left. So that's kind of the surrounding. I'd never been in Moreland Heights. And so this is kind of, you know, what what is there as, you know, a reference point of the of the houses, types of houses that kind of surround. You know, as you come through this development. So some of them are houses, some of them are are trailers that have been added on to make, you know, look more like houses. There are multiple houses on individual lots, and then you also have the mobile home park. Um. Adjacent to the subject property. As you can tell, are are stick-built houses. And that's important. Cause based on the current M H zoning, Mr. Grayson wouldn't even be allowed to build that today. This is the zoning. And if you look at M H, where I have highlighted residential uses, single-family residential site-built or modular homes is not allowed. So he could not match what's on either side of him under that zoning. He really wants to build a house, not put another trailer on that piece of property. And I think the adjoining property owners would appreciate that. Uh, to conclude, I want to address two items in the staff report that I don't agree with. Um, first, I would like to address item A. Whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the existing uses, development, and zoning of nearby property. Staff response states, the proposed R two zoning is not. Consistent. Well, yeah, let's go back. Is that in here, guy? Oh, I can't get that. I can't get that. The staff, you have that staff comments a little, or it may not be in there, that's fine. The proposed R two zoning is not consistent with the adjacent existing uses that are single-family residences. There's no adjacent R two zoning or any R two zoning in the vicinity. Staff analysis indicates that the proposed R two zoning is not suitable in view of the single-family development in the area. So as a reminder. Point that out, the adjacent sites are not solely single-family residences. There are mobile homes on Moreland Way, Moreland Heights, and Moreland Drive. By definition, a mobile home park is a multi-family development, can be anything else. In the Moreland Heights community, it appears that at least fifty percent of the single-family residences are currently owned by rental companies. Or owners with addresses outside the community. So there's some owners that own their homes and live there, some of them don't, they're rental properties, they'll live in this community. Second, I would less like to address item G. Conformity with or divergence from the future map, future development map, or the goals and objectives of the O County County Comprehensive Plan. Staff response states, the subject property lies within the community village center character area as shown on the character areas map, twenty twenty-three Okona County Comprehensive Plan update. The comprehensive plan describes a character area as containing a large grocery or drugstore, small office complexes such as office condominiums. Financial institutions, full-service restaurants, medical, dental clinics, gas station, community gathering spaces, and institutional uses such as libraries or community centers. A community village concept should create a small community where it is possible to live, work, and play through a variety of housing options. Small businesses, offices, retail shops, services, well-placed parks, plazas, and open spaces. Read that again, a community village concept should create a small community where it is possible to live, work, and play through a variety of housing options. Remember that, we'll come back to it. The comprehensive plan supports B one, B one M P D, B two, B two M P D in this character area. Staff finds the proposed R two zone is not in conformity with the comprehensive plan and is not part of a mix. As this is not part of a mixed-use project, we'll come back to that too. So staff is saying to be in line with the future development map, residential would only be allowed as a component of a mixed-use project. And that the comprehensive plan supports B one, B one M P D, B two, B two M P D zoning in this character area. Well, M P Ds are no longer allowed under the U D C, so that's two of those four out, I can't do them. So I'm left with B one and B two, that same matrix, both of which. B one to B two, single-family residential, not allowed either. So I can't do this based on the character at all. You can't do residential, can't do a mixed-use development at all. So I'm ble- I'm stuck. But here's another way to look at the request. Couple with the new developments, you have Peach State Academy daycare right here. You have True Steel, new, it's a redevelopment of a project. Flex Face Storage, proposed commercial across four forty-one has been approved and under, you know, that's being looked at right now. And this fine municipal building we're in. The Moreland Heights community could already be considered part of a mixed-use area. You put it all together, a mixed-use area doesn't have to be real tiny, it could be. An area, not just one point two acres or three point nine acres, whatever it is up here, this is an area. So the Moreland Heights community could already be considered part of a mixed-use area, and the R two zoning, two-family residential is very appropriate. Appropriate given the location, because it is a variety of a housing option. It's not just another single-family residence, it's another alternative, a variety. So that's all I have for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Um, I noticed, Mr. Grayson, you've signed up to speak, would you like to say? I I noticed you signed up to speak. All right.
I'm Rick Grayson. I own the property. When we bought the property, we, at the time, we uh, combined them or bought them together. We could build three houses on it. Today, I can put one house, one mobile home. Uh, I've talked to the neighbors that have joined the property. They're in favor of what I'm doing. I've talked to the people that live down the street that are owner occupants, they are in favor, not having talked to everybody about it, once I saw on the street and stopped talking. They're all in favor of it. The staff reports all have negative, they don't have the positive things in it. They don't say in there, well, I'm fixing to drop four or five hundred thousand dollars in there, building two buildings that's going to start. The renovation of that subdivision, there are people in the remodeling houses and fixing them. It is not going to be a target, or it's not going to be a red lobster. Those people aren't going to come to Moreland Heights, and that's what your future land use map says they're coming, they ain't coming. Uh. The property is not going to be for sale. Either I'm going to own it, my son wants to get the rental business, and he's selling his property in Jackson County, he's coming down here, and he wants those two duplexes. He'll either, when he sells his land, he'll build them, or if I get them built, he'll buy them from me. They are not for sale. They're just going to be for rent. Uh, it is a long-term investment, it's something with the family that's on for a long time. And uh, I'll answer any questions you have. It's not going to be. The neighbors will like it. The front strip that we have the driveway going down through, it'll be grass on both sides. It'll look nice, but if I go put a mobile home and they ain't, they ain't going to have that grass, you know? Uh, so anyway, any questions you got, I'll be glad to answer now or later, whatever.
All right, thank you. We'll keep hearing uh, other comments, and then we'll come back to the question possibly. Uh, so on the signup sheet, I have a Suzanne Heimel.
Hi, I haven't seen you since you're at my house, interested in possibly running for office. Um, my name's Susannah Heimel, I live at thirteen forty-two Winix Trail, um, in Watkinsville. Um, let's see. First of all, I'd like to question the planning commission and and their recommendation against rezoning this property. I do wonder why the commission is choosing to vote against the re- the um, the rezone. While they were more than in favor of rezoning the property that was adjacent to O V P, where the rezone was also non-uniform to the adjacent properties. I just drove by the property, and I I agree with you, it's, I mean, it's granted, they they will be duplexes. From the renderings I just saw, they look like single-family homes. I don't understand, you know, how there, how there could be any issues with neighbors or any kind of uniformity, just 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 looking at that. Um. Also, that, you know, the property's at the end of the street, which y'all know. Um, it's surrounded by mobile homes as well as modest, single-family homes. I just do not said, I do not understand how two ranch, one-story. Style duplexes would have a negative effect in this area. I'm I'm feeling like there must be something else going on here. Um, except maybe what you said about the the bigger plan. So I I'm here to speak in favor of the rezone, um, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Victoria Cruz.
Good evening, Board. Victoria Cruz, I live at eleven fifty-one Lake Wilbur Drive, Athens, Georgia. Uh, not too far from here, actually. I drive by this area a lot, but I have never been into the Moreland. Uh, property, however, as I was reading through the planning commission's reports and looking at the the map. Uh, I I did find it unusual that the board, the planning commission was. Uh, or the staff was recommending that this be denied. Because uh, I, there are duplexes elsewhere in the county, some of them look very nice. And given the photos that Mr. Grayson took, uh, they would probably be a benefit to this community. I can't imagine shoehorning any more like modular storage like we have out back here. Um, and and making the property less attractive than what Mr. Grayson would do. So it's just a a question as to why, when so many. Controversial rezones are recommended, why this one is being denied right now, it just doesn't make sense. But I am new to this process, so if you can explain it, um, then I'd be happy to listen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that's everyone that has signed up. Anybody else that wants to speak in favor of the project? All right, I'll close that portion, open it up to anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this recommendation or this request. Don't see anybody rushing the table, so I will go ahead and close uh, public comment and bring it up here to you guys. If you need to, of course, know you can ask planning staff or representatives to answer your question. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um. Since we don't have paperwork this week, and it was on our telephone, sent by email, can I have the rezone number?
Um, P twenty-four dash zero zero five six.
Okay, and can I see this, a uh, conditions back up on the. One.
The three conditions, if we prove it, um, these conditions were asked to be included.
Right. Yeah, it was just.
He's working on it.
I didn't comprehend it.
It was, it was pretty much the standard to development, uh, design instructors shall meet, exceed, blah, blah. Then the second one that we see very often at the owner's expense, any improvements to the road or the public water. Uh, would be the owner's responsibility. And then the last one was also getting to be very common, is the brick, stone, stucco, and lap siding consisting of a wood lap or fiber cement only. No.
All right, I. One of the drawings, it showed some brick-on-one and something, looked like party or something on the other one. So when we flip back to that. So, oh, go, go back one more. Maybe the next, the next, their next one, yeah, see, that one's got brick. So is that one going to be whole bricks or or it's going to look like the other, which? In words, what I'm asking is, what drawing takes precedence here? The drawing that's got the floor plan or the render?
It would be the condition. So if we go back to our number three, that condition would apply if planning commissioner and board commissioners deemed it appropriate.
Okay, so applicant would have a choice. Either brick, stone, stucco, or cement.
Yes, sir.
So both drawings would be fine.
That's right.
Got you.
All right.
I got a question, Justin.
Go ahead.
Um, Justin, how many? I think I know the answer, but I'm not hundred percent sure. Just one lot that Mr. Grayson owns, he could put a mobile home by right on its name? Or or both lot?
Just the one.
Just the one up front that can, is going to contain the driveway.
Correct.
Right. And and how many lots, mobile home lots, are there total around him now?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Not including his or include?
Uh, not including his.
Not.
Yeah, I counted those this afternoon.
Okay, um.
And of those, five lots are owned by the mobile home park, all are rentals. I'm not sure how many mobile homes. And then there are thirteen rentals of that thirty-three that I could tell. Now, that may be rentals meaning it's a lot with four homes, it's a lot with one home, a lot with two trailers. Could be a home, could be two trailers, I don't know. I saw the total number of rental units, I don't know.
Right, but that's something lots.
Yeah, thirty-three lots, thirteen appear to me, and I don't, you know, it's because they have, and I say that because they have a, if you look at the ownership, it has an owner name, and then it says Calbert. Or it says.
Sapphire Properties owns it or another rentals, or it may be, I also counted this to be completely transparent. If somebody owned a lot. And they owned adjacent lot with a house and it was the same owner, I counted one of them as a rental. So it may be a.
So maybe the owner lived there and you counted the other one as a rental?
Yes, sir.
Right, I got you.
Maybe a mom, or somebody might, you know, another family member may be living, I don't know if it's a rental or if it's family, I don't, I counted as a rental.
How many, since I'm not real familiar with that, how many feet away are those, uh, all those mobile home lots away from Mr. Grayson property?
I I could stand in. I could stand in his driveway and throw this pin and hit one.
Okay, so they're not like full of single family homes and then the.
No.
Other things are over there, because the pictures you showed, you know, I didn't see these mobile homes. Other than the ones you've shown, so I'm.
Yeah, there's.
Where all the mobile home lots are in relation to Mr. Grayson.
Well, can we go to an aerial game?
The whole area is zoned M H, there are some stick-built homes. That have evidently replaced mobile homes, but the area is still rated for mobile.
Except for the two acres of Mr. Grayson's got, this is all, yeah.
So if you, if you look here on this aerial.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So those are, if you go up the street to the right where the four. Can I borrow your pointer? Highlighting it on this one. It's the red, okay, so these are.
Oh, he's got it.
Here.
Okay, got you.
These four are mobile homes. There's a, appears to be a house here, but then there's a mobile home there and a mobile home there, that's a parking lot, that's like parking for four cars. So I do know just right down here based on this image sets. And so the mobile home park is, the park part is kind of scattered up through there, mu- it's mostly on the left-hand side here.
Right.
If you're looking at the plant going up the drive, but there are scattered out and some of the homes. Looked like there may have been mobile homes that were added on to, and that they kind of look like a house.
Yeah, so this might be a question for God, Justin, and you and you might know and you might not know, but. What, do you know our criteria, like if somebody wanted to change out one of those older mobile homes, could they go like buy a brand new one today? Put it where that one was?
Yes, but it has to be a double wide, it cannot be single wides.
So it can't be a single wide in the county anymore, but it, but they could replace them with double.
Yes.
With new double.
But you have to get by health department too, so your septic system, all that would fall under. The current regulations, which you can't just swap out, it's more than just.
Right, but I guess if your single wide had one, re- one, uh, bathroom. And you could have one bathroom with a double.
Or not, that'd be based on bed rails, yeah, I mean, you could get there, I mean, you you may say that four may go to, like the fo- one with the four.
Or it might go to two.
They go to two, might go to three, it depends on soils, depends on.
Okay.
But you could come in there, if the soils were all good and there was enough area, you could technically swap out all four singles for four doubles.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Got you.
Now, I'll stick in here that, uh, Mr. Grayson has left a large amount of space for septic systems for this proposed request. Much more than most of those lots would have. For their own use, so. He's he's accounted for the idea that there is not sewage at this.
Right, well, I assume since we're this far, we probably know the soils.
All right, uh, so. So I got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, has that generated some more questions?
I have a question for Justin.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned in your, your first statement that. In theory, Mr. Grayson has access from four forty-one, you wanted to go down that path?
We, we, well, yeah, let's, let's talk, let's talk about that a little bit, so grade change is. Just can we go to the plan? So, and it's hard to see on this.
My real question is, what is the current status of that theoretical access to four forty-one if there isn't? So my question is, or as a number four to the folks up here. If if we could state that number four is the only access to the property is from the. That, yes. Myself. But I'm just making sure that that's kind of.
Yeah, we we don't, we prefer not to go that route, because, I mean.
Part of the.
Yeah, that that is the topo, really, so here's the thing, the topo really.
I'm just wanting to kind of. The idea that just kind of tighten that up, that aspect.
But U N G argued very adamantly in Atlanta to try to get it right in.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so I don't see how two houses.
Yeah.
One house could, you know, whatever does apply. All right, so, but adding condition number four would be. Acceptable if we get to that point, keep that in mind. Um, now, has that generated some more questions?
It'd be paid. Yes, ma'am.
I think the county says more than three residents, so I guess that would count as four residents, right?
Yeah, I think it's Mr. Grayson's preference to be paid, he wants to do that.
All right. I haven't heard from this section. Do I have to start calling names? All right, um, so. Yes, if we've answered all the questions, we have. Time to take a motion. Chris has already expressed an interest, do you want to be?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve P two four dash zero zero five six with the number four that only access. The one that's mentioned in the application.
Hold on.
Moreland Drive.
I'll say.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. To approve. With the three.
With the others.
With the three, um, staff. Conditions and a fourth that says Moreland Drive access only.
Of the Moreland Way.
Moreland Way, sorry. Think I have a shorthand anyway. We have four conditions if approved, and now I'll ask, is there. Vote with your right hand if you approve this motion. And then vote for. Oppose, so that means, I don't have my count in front of me, but that means that it's passed by unanimous or by majority vote. All right, did I miss anybody that voted against? So that motion has been approved, sending on to the board of commissioners for consideration with four conditions. And with that, I have no other business in front of me, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mike, I have a question.
Oh, will we adjourn? Um, this is our first meeting that we've gone paperless. My preference is that we should go back. Um, because if I'm going to print it at home, there's the only difference.
Okay. Now, it's.
I have a problem printing at home because I can't print all.
All right, so let's take this in two steps, all in favor of paper, please raise your right hand, okay? Seems like most of us want paper, now the question is delivery. Would there be an option for on such and such a date, you guys coming to collect or some other?
I'm okay with the mail, that's great, I would just like to come here and there's a paper copy.
Okay.
I'm okay with the email to read, but when I come here, I want a paper copy. Well, I'm just, I don't want to bring my computer and I don't, and my phone's too little.
All right, so. I think we can work the rest of that out, but I'm going to go ahead and, uh, take the public meeting.
I would like to say it's a shame that we can't mail it from Watkinsville to get it.
Well, yeah, there is.
I would like for everybody here to know that we cannot mail from Watkinsville and get mail in. I'm a trash man, not a postman, so I'm not sure how that works, but it's a shame. Well, well, it's called FedEx.
All right. A different truck, okay, got it, all right, but let's go back to the idea that we can adjourn this meeting, discuss that a little bit further. So who would like to, uh, be my motion to adjourn? There we go. Lisa, no. All right, so Lisa is first and who's second step? So I have a first and a second, please raise your right hand this time, and now you can vote with your feet.